So I'm assuming we're ready to go, Kathy?
Yes, we are. We are ready to go.
All right. So I apologize, folks. I have no computer. I'm trying to do this from my phone this evening. So we'll call the meeting to order with a roll call, please.
Mr. Gomes.
Yeah.
Mrs. Boland.
Here.
Ms. Boatright.
Here.
Mr. Dring.
Here.
Dr. Flowers.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
I see him on the screen.
Mr. Leary.
Oh, yeah. He's muted.
Yes, he's muted. Ms. Winslow.
Here.
Mr. Leary, are you there? Thank you.
Can I have your name?
Yes, thank you.
Am I unmuted? Hello?
No.
You are. We are ready for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, we'll go into the Pledge of Allegiance, and I believe we have an ROTC student to lead us in that this evening.
We certainly do. Allison Brandsfield is here with us tonight.
Hello. Could everybody please rise if you're able to as you recite the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
United States of America.
The republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you.
And I'd like to turn it over to Chairperson, Mr. Gomez, for a moment of silence.
Thank you. We'll now have a moment of silence. Please keep the following individuals who have passed away in your thoughts and prayers. Gil Enos, Uncle of Gregory West, parent educator at Pell. Jack Robinson, father of Jennifer Robinson, English teacher at Rogers High School. Judith Hillier, cousin of Janice Mescarelli, teacher at Pell. Robert Coyne, uncle of Eileen Rerick, clerk at TMS. Francis Wondola, father of Barbara Wondola, art teacher at Rogers High School. We'll now have a moment of silence. Thank you. That moves us into our Student Council update, and I believe that we have Maggie Cohen with us this evening to give us that monthly update.
Hello, I'm Maggie Cohen. I'm the president of the Student Council at Rogers. This week is Spirit Week. We just started off with Character Day today, and tomorrow will be Theme Day. Senior prom tickets are available, which is super fun. Prom will be held on the 8th at the bowl. When AP exams start next week. The PTO meeting is tomorrow at 6:00. For the location, you have to email rhspti@psri.net. The 2021 yearbook is also available, and the link to order is in the Rogers announcements. The community school is still doing tutoring every day after school virtually. And senior launch day will be held virtually on May 21st. Spring sports are in full spring. They just started. Baseball won against classical on the 7th, and girls lacrosse won against Lincoln on the 8th, so pretty good start.
Do you know if we lost Ray, Kathy?
No, he is here, and he is unmuted. Mr. Gomes, you may go ahead.
Ms. Boland, you may want to take over until Mr. Gomes is able to continue.
Let me just get the agenda up really quick. Well, it's a night of a... I know it. I have it up here, but... This is the problem. I have my two devices, and... Uh-oh.
I had to refresh the Word doc screen a couple of times myself, so it might be something.
I have the same problem with Word docs.
Am I back? Am I back?
Yes.
Yes, oh, good.
Mr. Gomes, you're back.
I haven't. I haven't done anything. I've been here the whole time. I just don't know what's going on. I have a bad, bad karma technology-wise tonight, but I'm back.
Okay.
Student council is done. We'll move into the recognition and certificates of achievement. And I'm not, again, I'm not sure. Are we moving along with some of these, or are we postponing some of these? I know...
Maggie and Elena, Alaney are here, and young Mr. Colley is still at practice, so he will not make...
Okay.
And he'll be here in June.
Okay, so we'll have the recognition of the Rogers High School students who recently participated in the Skills USA Rhode Island competition. And as we just heard, James Colley earned a bronze medal for carpentry, and Maggie Cohen and Alena Cooper earned a gold medal in web design. Maggie and Alena will participate in the national competition virtually on June 21st through 24th. And I apologize, I'm assuming they're here, and I'm just a little handicapped at the moment on the technology end of things. So I hope they're here, and I'm not sure if there's anybody that is going to speak further on their behalf.
I believe Ms. Leterno is here to speak on their behalf. She is here with us, Mr. Chair.
Hi. Good afternoon or good evening, everybody. I just wanted to quickly, you know, mention Alaney and Maggie's achievements. They did work very hard on their web design for the web design competition. They actually have been working on this for the past couple of years because of last year's COVID. They weren't able to compete. So they have been working on a website for the Island Moving Company, ballet company, and they actually have it for the junior company. So they're dancers for the junior company as well. So they've created a really, a really great website for that. And, you know, they definitely earned that gold medal for the state, and I'm hoping that they do well in the national competition. And they've actually changed the date for it, so it's June 14th. So ladies, just be aware of that. But June 14th will be the national competition for them, and they, yes, they're very deserving of this. So I'm glad that they're able to be recognized tonight, so thank you. I don't know if they were...
Fantastic.
That's amazing. Thank you.
Congratulations, girls. Well done. Well done.
Yeah, great job.
Congratulations.
Something that's very usable in the market these days, so you're setting yourself apart. Great job.
Now bring home the national title.
I have one question. I wanted to know how many, maybe how many teams actually participate in the national competition? How many other teams are you going up against?
So I mean, I can speak to that. I can tell you about, or Lenny, did you? Go ahead.
I know that one.
I was just gonna say only... Only one state from every, or excuse me, only one team from every state is in there, and then there's some states that actually don't have web design. So it's not, you know, it's not 50, but it'd only be one team from every state representing. But, yeah, so they do have a lot of competition. There's, you know, some really good teams from Texas and California, but I think they, I think they will hold their own for sure.
I have a question for you. Is it a in-person, or is this going to be virtual?
Yeah, so they're competing virtually. I believe there are some states that are going to the competition, and it's in Atlanta, Georgia this year, but most states are competing virtually.
Does that make it more difficult, or does it make a difference?
To be honest, for some of the categories, I do think it does make it more difficult, but for them, it's a, you know, computer technology presentation, and they did really well in their virtual interview for the state competition. So I think it's, I don't think it's going to be more difficult in this category, but, yeah, if young Mr. Colley were here, I'm sure he would tell you that it was a little more difficult to compete in carpentry virtually.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Alrighty. Thank you very much, all, and congratulations to the winners.
Ms. Winslow had her hand raised, I believe, Mr. Chair.
Somebody, yeah, go right ahead. Nope, somebody's gonna have to help out with that.
Should've just started talking. Um, do, does the Island Moving Company have any plans to use this website? Do girls know? Just being a local company and, you know, using your talents? Or was it purely just like a...
They had a very rough, very not user-friendly website that I think they might have been in the beginning processes of finding someone to revamp it when we brought it to them, like, hey, we made this thing. And I think it was already in the works for them to have, like, a professional, like, do the whole thing up. So they were like, oh, maybe we can consider it, but I think they've gone a different route with how they're gonna redo the website. But we did get to, you know, put it in our portfolios and stuff, and like, it's on the Newport AIT website, linked on both of our pages, so.
Do social media.
And that actually ended up hooking us up with a little internship through them to do their social media, which is another opportunity that we got from it instead of, we didn't put the website live, but we've had some other opportunities.
I have a question for you. You told ahead of time what your next project will be, or do you bring something in?
Um, we kind of can come up with what we want to do. Website-wise, the category is to either revamp a website or make something that doesn't already...
We could have had a job for you called this, so.
I know. In previous years, we made one for...
I believe that's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you again. Congratulations and good luck in the nationals. So the next is recognition of P-PAC Scholarship winner this year, Maximilian Viveros from Thompson Middle School, 7C1, is being awarded the Providence Performing Arts Center Scholarship for 2021 Representing Newport Public Schools. The 2021 Arts Scholarship Selection Committee of the Providence Performing Arts Center sought scholarship applications from talented students ages 11 to 14 from the 2021 Arts Scholarship Program. The Arts Scholarship Program sponsored by the Textron Charitable Trust and P-PAC's Annual Fund. Donuts with support from WPRI TV awards up to 500 and financial assistance to 30 winning Rhode Island students from the state's Rhode Island communities for summer arts education programs. Max will be able to attend the P-PAC summer programs of his choice. And I'm assuming that we have Max with us this evening, and I am sure that Diane, Mrs. Sheehan, Diane Sheehan is with us as well and probably wants to say a few words, so.
Max is definitely with us. Ms. Nash, I'm not sure. He's waving, and I'm not sure if Director Sheehan's here.
Yes, Ms. Sheehan, I just brought her on.
All right, great.
She is here.
As always, she does a fantastic job finding these things, these programs for the children to participate and represent us. So, great job, and I'm sure she may want to say a few words.
There she is, yes.
Of course, I want to say a couple of words. But my camera's working and my computer's working, so I'm already on a roll. So I just wanted to congratulate Max. It was very competitive, as you read, and that he is, one part of the application was to send as much information as we could, the family could, regarding what he does in the arts. He has done work in the Island Moving Company. He plays an instrument, plays the violin. He does a lot of animation, and hopefully he'll be able to do the animation at the Newport Art Museum through P-PAC. So he is the whole package, plus he does community service with his family, and his mom works at Thompson Middle School, too, so it's really a family affair. So I just wanted to say that as a school, we are honored to have Max in our presence, and that maybe he may just want to say a word or so in the comfort of his nice room there, or his art studio, and congratulations. Max, do you want to say something?
I mean, be here. It's an honor. And, yeah. It's so weird. I would... Man, it's kind of... Yeah, thank you. Thank you for being here.
Are you looking forward to the summer program?
Yes, I am.
Good.
I have a question for Max. Max, when did you start getting interested in art?
Well, I was very young, like, around, like, four, where I was just a dual, like, drawing with crayon, and then, what was it called? Then I just really, I just loved to draw, so, yeah.
Great. I have a question for Max, and maybe Mrs. Sheehan knows a little bit of the details, too, but tell me about the summer programs. Is it just visual art? Is it music? Can Max, can you participate in more than one program?
I actually don't know, but I think it's one, one, one art thing, and you get to choose to do a week, or, yeah. Okay.
Yes, and I'll just add to that is that because it's through P-PAC in Providence, they give a list of workshops. And so then Max chooses which one he would like to do, and his choice was right in our very own backyard, the Newport Art Museum. So there's dance, there's music, there's a number of the arts. It's all connected. It's all related. So we're gonna, we haven't seen the last of Max. Let's just put it that way. Where he's definitely an aspiring artist in all of the arts. So congratulations, Max. Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
Nice job, Max. Thank you very much, and good luck this summer.
Thank you.
So that will bring us to the third recognition that we have this evening. This next one is recognition of Dr. Ronnie Lee Mooney, who is, was recently recognized by the Rhode Island Department of Education as a Rhode Island educator, leader representative for 2021. This honor recognizes Dr. Mooney's exceptional educational leadership, talent, and accomplishments in improving academic access for our English language, English learner population. Dr. Mooney will be invited to participate on panels and committees as a content expert and district representative for Newport. And again, I'm not quite sure. I know Dr. Mooney does outstanding work for us, and we're very happy to have her, but I'm not sure if Dr. Jermaine or...
Yes.
Somebody's gonna say a few words. Okay?
Yes, I am here, and her colleagues are here as well, watching. This is a new initiative that the Department of Ed has created, in which it's looking for, they actually call it, a talent pool of Rhode Island leaders and future leaders. And when the application came out, I did share it amongst the group, and a couple of Dr. Mooney's colleagues suggested to me that I submit Dr. Mooney's name. So I did write up the application. I filled it out, and she has been nominated, awarded, and not only will she be a national representative, a state-local level representative in the area of English learners, but also nationally as well. She'll be invited by the Department of Ed to participate in future discussions. And I don't believe it's just for one year, Dr. Mooney. I think they're gonna be tapping your talents for quite a few, so I want to congratulate you. We're very proud. Dr. Mooney's done an excellent job down here in Newport, and I know she's sought after by many of our fellow districts and consulting roles, and also at the university level. So Dr. Mooney is here. I don't know if she wants to say a few words, but congratulations, and your colleagues are here. They're zipping me now.
Well, thank you so much, Dr. Jermaine. I really appreciate it. I apologize for the background noise. I have a couple toddlers, and it's my daughter's third birthday tonight, so. Sorry. I just want to thank everyone for this amazing recognition. Obviously, I do this all for our student population that's ever-growing, and I love the task of creating and thinking of new ways to support them in our families and making them part of our community. So I just want to say thank you to everybody.
All right, good job. Thank you.
Congratulations, Dr. Mooney. Thank you to everyone. Lovely to see you all.
Well done. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you, and enjoy that birthday party. Sounds like fun.
Thank you.
So that gets us through the recognition and certificates of achievement. We'll move on to public comment. Mrs. Nash, do we have any public comment this evening?
We do not have public comment this evening.
Alrighty. So that moves us into our action items, and again, I'm gonna apologize. I can, I have an agenda in front of me with the action items, but I may be limited in my, I could print out up to here off of my phone, but I couldn't keep up with the meeting. So we'll move into the action items. First one is 5.1, request for appointments to subcommittees. And I believe these are appointments, if memory serves me right, to the Policy Subcommittee and Wellness Subcommittee of Public and Public Membership, if I recall from reviewing them. So is there a motion to approve the appointments to subcommittees as presented this evening?
So moved.
And I, so I will rely on, I will rely on Mrs. Nash to record those all appropriately. I know there was a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or question on the motion and appointments?
No questions.
Okay, not hearing any. Mrs. Nash, can you do a roll call vote to approve the appointments as presented this evening?
Yes, Mr. Gomes.
Aye.
Mrs. Boland.
Aye.
Ms. Boatright.
Aye.
Mr. Dring.
Aye.
Dr. Flowers.
Aye.
Mr. Leary.
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow.
Aye.
That was a 7-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next action item is 5.2. It's request for approval of policy 4100 Human Resources Administrative Lines of Responsibility. The second reading, is there a motion to approve the policy on the second reading as presented this tonight?
Can I make a motion to put the three second readings together and do them as one vote, just to help you out with your technology?
You can, that's a fine motion. So if the motion, we will do, motion is to put numbers 5.2, 5.3, and 5.4, which are three policies on the second reading, into one motion for approval. Is there a motion and a second for that?
I made the motion. A second.
Made the motion second, okay. So there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on any of the three policies this evening?
Ms. Winslow.
Go ahead, Mr. Leary.
I'm gonna vote against that. We don't have to vote against one or two of the policies, but not all of them. So if we're left them together, I'm just gonna vote no.
Alrighty, thank you. Was there somebody else that had a question or a statement?
Ms. Winslow.
Mr. Gomes.
Ms. Winslow. Go right ahead.
Yeah, policy, item 5.3, policy 4150, I actually wanted to make an amendment, make a motion to amend it. I think that there's a sentence that could be...
Yeah, just give me a moment. Is it 4150 you want?
Yeah, item 5.3. It's the second out of...
Okay, fine. Let me just, I'm opening up everything on Word docs now. Okay.
So I think our, our rights motion might fail.
All right, so let's take a minute.
All right.
Hold on. Oh, everybody, hold on. So let's, I'm gonna ask that, based on the last two comments, I'm gonna ask that Ms. Boatright withdraw her motion to put them together, and we'll do the three policies one by one. It's gonna be cleaner, so.
Yep, I can do that. Got to go through.
Thank you.
Yep.
So 5.2, a motion to approve 5.2 on the third policy, 4100 on the second reading, is there a motion and a second?
Motion to approve 5.2.
Okay.
Second.
Is it, okay, so there's a motion and a second. Is there any comment on 4100 on the human resources policy? Not hearing any. Mrs. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to approve policy 4100 on the second reading this evening?
Yes, Mr. Gomes.
Aye.
Mrs. Boland.
Aye.
Ms. Boatright.
Aye.
Mr. Dring.
Aye.
Dr. Flowers.
Aye.
Mr. Leary.
May.
And Ms. Winslow.
Aye.
Thank you. That was 6-1.
Okay, so 5.3 is a request for approval of policy 4150 Human Resources Administrative Organization on the second reading. Is there a motion to approve as presented this evening?
I move.
Motion.
Motion is made and seconded. Are there any, is there any discussion? I believe this is the one that, there was a typo to be corrected, correct?
Yes. Sorry, I'm opening it now.
We're on 4150?
I wanted to make a motion to amend the second paragraph, which is actually the second sentence. Right now, it reads, "Reporting to the superintendent shall be administrators as are identified in the organizational chart..." "...in appendix and whose functions are described below." I would like to append, amend this to just say, "Reporting to the superintendent shall be administrators as are identified in the organizational chart."
I believe, this looks like it's been cleaned up. Because I guess we will put that organizational chart in an appendix, correct?
No, this was discussed during the subcommittee meeting, and I believe the changes were not amended, as Ms. Winslow just read.
Okay, so just period after chart?
So, so may I suggest that we withdraw the policy? We're gonna have to do it on two readings anyhow, and we would bring it back next month for the first reading, and then do a second reading. If, I believe, Mr. Galvin, is that correct? If we, if we were to amend the language this evening, it would still require a second reading?
No, if you amend it tonight, it can pass on the second reading tonight. That's the purpose of having two meetings. You don't have to have a third meeting tonight, so you don't need to...
Okay, so that's great. Let's get that wording worked out, and we'll get it through this evening.
My suggestion, this is my suggestion. Second paragraph, where it says, "Reporting to the superintendent." If we put a period after the word "chart," the capital C, you know, "chart," period, get rid of the rest of that sentence. Would that be clear enough? Anyone?
I believe that was Ms. Winslow's suggestion.
Yeah. We had.
We just keep it simple.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could keep set forth in appendix, but I don't know where that appendix is.
Yeah, you don't really, yeah, I mean, that's something that will be.
Then we keep it, otherwise we strike everything after chart.
Yeah, that's it. So just cut off the rest of that.
So bear with me for a moment. I'm going, I'm not quite sure who, who made the motion to approve it as presented. I would ask that person to withdraw their motion.
Okay.
Whoever that was.
Just make a motion to amend.
I, I made a motion.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a policy before, we have a motion to amend the policy as presented. If, if Mrs. Nash is clear on the amendment, then we would take a vote on the policy as amended.
Well, take a policy first on the amendment, then take a policy on the vote as amended. You're going to have to take two votes.
Okay, understood. So do we understand the policy as amended? Have we agreed on that we're going to insert a period somewhere and drop some language?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
You need to.
So, isn't that?
Yeah, we understand.
No, we have a motion and a second. Yep, we're fine with that. So Mrs. Nash, can we do a vote on the policy as amended?
No, on the amendment first.
On the, yeah.
Okay. A motion, a vote, I'm sorry, on the policy, on the amendment to the policy.
Correct.
Do you want some more?
Thank you. No, we're just going to vote on the amendment now.
Just on the amendment. Okay, Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Boland?
Aye.
Ms. Boatwright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Okay, so the admit, thank you, the amendment passes and we will now have a vote to pass the policy on the second reading as amended.
I, I want to speak first.
Okay.
So I have a concern.
Go right ahead.
So does this make, the change in this means that, that no committee member can approach the, our lawyer, is that correct? It means only the chairman can?
Okay, you're going to the third paragraph?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah.
Does that what they, is that what that means? That only the chairperson can, can contact the attorney? So that's a change from before where members could.
Anyone could do it, yeah.
Okay. And then that was made because, because we felt it was being overused or?
I mean, if you have a question.
No, I, I just.
Yeah, you see the procedure. You say to the chairman.
I see it.
Put it all together. It makes things more efficient.
Yeah.
As a member and you have a question, you want to seek legal advice, and so you reach out to the chair and say, you know, what should I do? And the questions are funneled through the chair, I guess.
Right, but, but if the chair chooses not to ask the question, then, right?
Well, then.
Sometimes as a committee member, you need.
To the end of that paragraph, where it says, "As a consequence of formal committee direction." Now, Mr. Galvin can tell me if I'm heading in the right direction. The end of that particular paragraph, if there was something that, say, if you had a chair who says, "No, I'm not going to address that," and members of the committee want it addressed by legal.
I don't think it allows you to do it.
Any situation, if for whatever reason the chairperson felt it was inappropriate to ask legal counsel for an opinion on something at a school committee meeting, any committee member could make a motion to appeal the decision of the chairman and take a vote and have the majority decide whether it's appropriate or not. There's a.
Okay, that's what I meant.
If it, if there was a breakdown for whatever reason.
Sure.
So I just want to add, this did not come from me as chairperson. This is coming from the Policy Committee. So I'm not staying silent because it was my idea.
No, no.
It's from the policy, so I don't have the answer. I just wanted to be clear in that I can't see everybody, so I was just being clear that this was coming out of the Policy Committee. But I agree with Mrs. Boland's point.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not in favor.
So that.
Nothing personal.
I, I have to say that I, I missed this when we went through the Policy Committee. I, I.
But this was, this was all sent to you though, you know.
No, I, I totally agree with you. I totally agree with you, Dr. Flowers. I'm just saying, I missed it.
I see you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leary.
I am 100% against this. We all get elected. We don't have to go through the shit for us and to contact attorney, nor does the city or any other place. So I can't wait to say no in this, but the public here, this is the pastor.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I want to ask a question. As has happened in the past, there have been times when I have contacted the chair and he has said, because of the issue is more complex, he said, you can go directly to Neil Galvin, you know? So would that allow that to, it's written in a word, in a way that it sounds like he was the only one, or the chair, the only one who can contact, but they could also, is that possible to, to amend it to, so that the chairperson? Because I do agree that the chairperson should know what's going on and not have frivolous things, but, but they could say, another member could contact somebody, i.e., like when we're doing building, school building stuff and so on, you know? We've had to contact the.
Contact the attorney for that. That, that makes, yeah, that does make sense instead of you.
Always.
Yeah, it just cuts through the chase, yeah.
Right.
So.
Because I think, my personal opinion, I was going to finish the thought, is that I think things should go through the chair. If anybody has a disagreement, they can bring it in front of the entire committee and then the committee can approve something outside of that. But I've never found it to be a problem in the past, working with Ray.
Right, I, I'm not saying anything against Ray, and it's never been a problem, but you're creating policy that goes on forever, okay? So until at such times it's changed again. And I will say that most often, when you need a legal advice, you need it right away. You don't need it 30 days from now at the next meeting. And now you also have to see if you can get it on the agenda. So I will still be voting no, even if you put that extra piece in there. And as I said, it has nothing to do with Ray. He's been really great, you know? So.
The, the way I'm, I'm just speaking for myself now, that tightening up some of this prevents, I don't mean to use the word legally, because especially we have an attorney here, but it prevents some frivolous phone calls, emails, whatever, that could have made, maybe could be thought out or discussed in-house. Things maybe saying, going through the chair, something on that order, because it's a professional courtesy, if nothing else, that the chair knows that contact is being made with, that's why you have a chair.
Why you have a chair?
That's why you have a chairperson, because it just fine tunes a lot of the process. I mean, seven of us have the same question. That's, that's the whole, that's the point, too.
Well, maybe we should take this back to the Policy Committee and make it a little more palatable to everybody. Like I said, I, I feel like I missed this. I probably wouldn't have voted again, wouldn't have voted for this.
Well, that's just okay.
Also, I'm embarrassed to say that it slipped by me, but.
No, no, it's just, especially when you first start working on these things.
I mean, I have a couple of different ideas for wording it, so it's not, we're going to spend too much time.
No, this is not the, yeah. Do you want to pull it now and then?
That would be my suggestion.
So I will, so I believe it just simply, we can, again, have the motion withdrawn and we can send it back to the Policy Committee. I don't believe we have to take a formal action, correct, Mr. Galvin?
That's correct. You don't have to proceed with it and it can be sent back for further work.
Yep.
All right, so if, again, I apologize, I'm not quite sure whose motion we're working on, but if that.
I, I motioned it. Yeah, I motioned it, so I'll, I'll withdraw it and to send it back to the committee for further work.
Fine. Yep, so the motion's withdrawn and we will send it to the Policy Committee to be revisited and come back next month, so. Our next pop, next item is 5.4, request for approval of policy 4300. Human Resources Administrative Team, second reading, is there a motion to approve policy 4300 as presented this evening?
Motion to approve.
Motion is made and seconded. Are there any discussion or questions on policy 4300? I am not hearing any. So Mrs. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to approve policy 4300 on the second reading this evening?
Yes, Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Boland?
Aye.
Ms. Boatwright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. That was a 7-0. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next item, 5.5, is request for approval of policy 4310, Human Resources Administrative Team Agenda of Meeting on the first reading. Is there a motion to approve policy 4310 as presented?
Yep, so, motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve and second, are there any questions or discussion on policy 4310?
No.
I am not, I'm not hearing any. So Mrs. Nash, can you do a vote, a vote to, roll call vote to approve policy 4310 as presented this evening?
Yes, Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Boland? Ms. Boatwright? Mr. Dring? Dr. Flowers? Mr. Leary?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you, 7-0.
Terrific. Our next item is 5.6. It's a request for approval of policy 4400, Human Resources Administrators Attendant at School Committee Meetings on the first reading. Is there a motion to approve 4400 as present, policy 4400 as presented?
Nope, so, so moved.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments on 4400, uh, policy 4400? I'm sorry. Very good, not hearing any. Mrs. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to approve policy 4400 on the first reading this evening?
Yes, Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Boland?
Aye.
Ms. Boatwright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers? Mr. Leary?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you, 7-0.
Okay. Our next item, that brings us to 5.7. I may need some help after I get through this initial part, but this is 5.7, is request for approval of inter-agency agreement between Newport Public Schools and the Newport Community School for Adult, for Quiddick Island Adult Learning Center Support. I know Dr. Bean is here. Is there a motion to approve the agreement this evening?
I would like to make a motion that we, that we lump 5.7, if there's no objection, and through 5.18 together to one vote.
I, I have no, I have no problem with that. If there's any members that plan to comment or have questions that would alter that, please speak up. If not, we'll entertain that motion.
Just a second.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, so there is a motion to take, to approve items 5.7 through 5.18.
Mr. Chairman?
All, yes, Mr. Leary.
I have no problem with that. I'd like to have Mr. Galvin comment on a few things here and the business manager also, if they could explain to the public what is going on with this, so the press, if you can see what it is.
So I will be more than happy to entertain that if, Mr. Galvin, go right ahead.
No, I'm, I'd be deferring to Dr. Bean or the superintendent relative to them. I don't think I've been involved with reviewing them, so I defer to, to Jermaine or Dr. Bean and certainly financially to Ronnie.
So you have, have not been involved, Mr. Galvin?
I have not been involved.
Have not, okay.
So let me just make a suggestion from, that we make the motion, we can certainly answer any questions, and my intent would be to briefly go through as we would do the motions. And if we could do that, I, I don't know the intent, but I'm just saying that we could do that certainly. It may be just easier to do them one at a time. I don't believe that's going to be too prohibitive. But that's, again, if we make the motion and it's seconded, we can do, what is the, what is the request of the committee? So if, if we still like the motion, Ms. Boland does have a motion, I'm not sure if it was seconded.
Yes, I.
Yeah, it was seconded.
Okay, so there is a motion.
Speak, I think, that's.
There is a motion and a second to approve 5.7 through 5.18, all interaction, inter-agency agreements. So if there's a motion and a second, we'll have Dr. Bean give a overview of these and then we can have a vote.
Dr. Bean, do you want to give a brief overview of each one, please?
Sure. So the first one is our Aquidnic Island Adult Learning Center Agreement. This is a locally funded program that we have supported over a number of years. This, this is part of the Newport Community School operation of providing a variety of different adult programs, both at the Thompson site and at Kennedy School.
Thank you. I think, I believe you can go on to the next one.
Okay, great, great. The, the next three, 5.8, 5.9, and 5.10 are the behavior specialists that we support at Pell Elementary School, Thompson, and at Rogers High School. And so the, the three behavior specialists are on, one, one of them is supported under our Title I funds at Pell Elementary School and the other two are locally funded.
Thank you.
The, the next set of programs are, some of the summer programs that we are continuing and then we've expanded on quite a few of them, based on COVID and skill gaps. The Thompson Summer Success Program, we've expanded from a four-week program with servicing 30 children to a six-week program servicing 70 children. We're recommending funding be part of our ESSA application. Thompson 101 is a program that has been in the works for many years, and this is one of our transition programs for our fourth graders going into fifth grade. Also a program that we're recommending be part of our ESSA application. Thompson What's Your Path Program, what I've observed is that we, besides the Rogers 101, we have not formally had a program for our eighth graders as they exit Thompson. So we designed a program called Thompson What's Your Path Program, and it's a readiness program around different certifications and credentials. And we feel like this would be really engaging for our eighth graders moving into ninth grade. And this program, we're also recommending be part of our ESSA application. So those are the three programs for Thompson. The next few are our Rogers programs. We've also redesigned the Rogers. Uh, we've also redesigned the Rogers, um, Credit Recovery Program to be a more project-based program. We also just learned, we received our, a Title IV grant that I wrote to, um, provide professional development for the high school teachers to create project-based, um, programs for our students during the summer. Uh, this program also I'm recommending to be part of our ESSA application. And then Rogers 101, we have, um, transformed that program in the development of our, um, ninth grade teams. So we have our full set of, um, ninth grade teachers that, uh, support this Rogers 101 program. We do team building as well as skill development and the students that attend that do get a, um, half a credit for being part of that program.
Thank you.
The, um,
Okay. No, go ahead, Ken Todd. Sorry, finish.
Okay. I, nope, nope, I'm not done yet. So, uh, we have a few inter-agency agreements. We have the, uh, family service coordinators. And, uh, a big portion of that is supported by the Title I grant and along with the competitive grant that we apply for every year with the McKinney Vento, um, education grant. Uh, we have the next, um, couple of, um, agenda items are connected with Pell Elementary School and that's the Summer Learning Academy. Uh, we, uh, support, um, the funding through Title I for the, um, the communities, I mean, for the Summer Learning Academy. And we also support this program through our Title III grant, um, since we're, um, we target, um, many of our students that need English language learning support. In addition, this year, Dr. Mooney and I have been working with, um, URI and Roger Williams and, uh, several of our teachers are being, um, getting their certificate in ELL. Uh, and they'll start their training, um, at the Pell Elementary Summer Program. Along with the grant that Dr. Mooney was involved with, with the Speech Pathology at URI, um, they're supporting the program as well. Uh, the, the next one is our Extended School Day. We provide funds, um, to support the after-school program at Pell through the Title I grant. And we are also recommending, um, that this be part of our ESSA application to expand the number of teachers that work in our after-school program. So, I believe that's everything.
Thank you very much and thank you for all your work on these.
Welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leary?
Couple of questions. Uh, Mrs. Bean, um, if, if ESSA money, um, the ones that involve the ESSA money, I look through all of them. If it's not accepted, where's the money coming from?
Uh, Dr. B, can I, um, speak up, please? Uh, good, good evening, school committee members. Um, the, all of the contracts presented in front of you tonight are included in two funding streams right now. The general fund, we have, um, all the accounts covered there as well as Title I. Now, a large component of the contracts we're talking about today are all allowable as education enrichment within the ESSR guidance. So it is very likely these will all be included after, uh, the, the grant is presented to the team here and you approve it, that, uh, we'll, we'll put it in the grant application uh, for the ESSR funds, uh, to support it. I hope that, uh, answers your question, Mr. Leary.
Yes, and I'd ask that you could get it again. So now the second follow-up, that question would be, what, now that would seem to have, that would be, where is the money going to go now that was entitled one for that? What's that going to be used for? Is that going to be deducted? What's going to happen to that money?
Um, I, I actually, I was not clear on this, but I had actually no intention on removing the Title I component of the grant because that is a federal funding stream as opposed to our general.
So we're going to have all the extra money in Title I?
Um, it's, I wouldn't throw it as extra money, but it is accounted for within our allocation of Title I funding. Yes.
If it's not accounted for those programs, what's it going to be accounted for?
It, it is accounted for, sir. Um, the, the component that will cover Title I, uh, which will be the Pell Behavior. And then, um, roughly three at Thompson and three at Rogers, while totaling, uh, eight other programs will be funded through the general fund. Right now, that's in our 2021, uh, 2022 budget, excuse me. And when the application for the ESSR II is available to us, I will look to it for support for these programs, these education enrichment programs.
I have a question.
Oh, good. Well, I can continue, Mr. Chairman, till I get the floor up. Um, I'm a little confused on that. I will continue a conversation about that because there's a decent amount of money on the table and if it all comes from ESSR funds, we're going to have that money in Title I or general fund. I just wanted to know what we're going to do with that. So I'll keep on top of that. My second, um, comment, though, this is, uh, um, uh, to, to, to Mrs. Bean, is are there, uh, are there these new programs?
Yes, the one I mentioned about, um, the eighth graders going to ninth grade, uh, that isn't, that is a new program uh, that we are, uh, expanding this year. Otherwise, what we did, um, we combined a couple of programs, to expand the Thompson Summer Success Program. So I wanted more children in that program and, um, and I wanted it a longer, um, amount of time so that we expanded that one.
Well, let me, uh, my last comment on that, that's, uh, excellent. I think this is a great idea, even expanding in the other ones. The more we use an outside agency, the better it is for us. The people that don't know this, or maybe, uh, I'm surprised, some of the council people I've talked to didn't know this, that teachers do not pay into unemployment as you do if you're working in a hotel or a restaurant with another business. So if you, if these are all teacher-related or whatever you want to call it, related programs, you would, you would, if you lay the people off, the money spires, the ESSA money, you don't have it. You'd be paying for their unemployment where the people that pay, like in a restaurant or a hotel, a weekly stipend comes out, both the owner and the employer, employee. So this is a good idea. The more you move in this direction, the better it's going to be for us that we won't have to be involved with paying a, the, uh, program has to be deleted or go, get eliminated, whoever, won't be involved with the unemployment. The agency would be involved that hire the people for the unemployment. And thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Um, one of them is, uh, concerning, this is for Mr., um, uh, Gonzo's. So if, if we were to take things out of our Title I budget and move it into, um, the general fund or use ESSR funds to pay for it, are we in danger of supplanting? And, you know, that's my first question.
With regard to ESSR II and ESSR III funding, actually, ESSR I as well, supplanting is not, I mean, issue with that federal funding stream.
Okay, so it won't make a difference to our Title I funds. Okay, that was the first question. My second question is for, uh, Dr. Bean. How, what, what kind of safeguards are you going to have in place to get our kids to come every day on a regular basis?
So that, that is one of the reasons why we changed the, um, the format that we've typically had at Thompson and Rogers. So we changed it from a credit recovery to more of a project-based, uh, and a, um, a place-based type program so that it was more authentic, more, um, relevant, more engaging. Uh, so what we've been doing is developing, um, really like three core skills at every content level and working with the community school on designing their, um, their application for teachers to apply to be part of the program. Uh, and like I mentioned, we wrote a grant for the high school for professional development for the high school teachers who are going to be doing, um, their project-based, um, recovery as well. So, um, we're hoping that the project-based is more engaging and we're also making it similar to what we designed at Pell School that in the afternoon, um, we move more into, um, more, uh, community-type, um, activities um, as opposed to all day long being, um, academic. So, you know, we, those are some of the pieces that we've done to try to change it up a bit and make it more engaging for the students, more, um, more relevant and, uh, and almost, um, you know, that, that they're going to, um, kind of create a project and they're going to work on it. And through it, there'll be research, there'll be writing, there'll be math, there'll be science, there'll be graphing, there'll be technology. And then there'll be, um, some exploration, um, out into the community.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, Mr. Gomes?
All right.
Question?
Go right ahead.
Uh, it's for Dr. Bean and I'm curious to know how, um, how students come to be placed in, in one or any of these programs? Is it primarily staff recommending it or do parents and students get involved at all? And, and do we track that data? So it can be analyzed, you know, who's, who's recommending and why?
Yeah, it's, um, well, for the, e- every school, um, has different, slightly different criteria for the students that, um, are invited to the programs. But, uh, um, typically, we're looking at our, um, our STAR data, which gives us our, um, our percentile levels for ELA and math. Uh, we are also looking at our students who need English language support. Uh, and, and then at the middle school and the high school, we're also looking at, um, you know, their, their coursework. And, you know, and then we also absolutely, um, look at, uh, teacher recommendations and then we reach out to families. Uh, we also work with all our community partners to make sure our, our students, if we're recommending them, but the family has already selected MLK or the Boys and Girls Club or Fab Newport, we work in conjunction with them. So right now, we're in the middle of sharing, um, I had mentioned earlier, the, um, the skill, um, list that we're working on, um, in the content areas at the, um, the middle school where we're working with Fab Newport and, uh, and Boys and Girls Club and the community school. On, you know, those key skills that we're looking at that, uh, that we want our students to be successful in and at each grade level. So, um, to, and then also we do track the data. So, um, you know, we have many, um, people that support our programs beyond on our titles and our local funds. Um, we have a lot of grants coming in, um, specifically at Pell Elementary School. And so, um, we do track the data and we test the students with a, a pre and a post. Um, with, using the STAR and, um, the three sites that we, uh, collaborate with, MLK and Boys and Girls Club and Pell. Uh, we write a report at the end of the summer based on, on student attendance and, um, and their success in the program based on using that data. And then we share that data with their, with their new teachers as well.
Okay. And it also shared with the students and the families? You know, the students?
Yeah, that, at Pell Elementary, at Pell's program, the students get a little like progress report. Uh, and we do student-led conferences, um, throughout the, the six weeks of the program. Parent, parents are invited in to look at different um, projects and, um, meet with the teacher. You know, the, over the years, um, you know, it, it varies in the, in the number of participation because, you know, men, many of our parents are working. So, um, but, uh, we do offer that.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, are there any other questions or comments? All right, not hearing any. Mrs. Nash, could you do a roll call vote on the motion uh, to approve action items 5.7 through 5.18, uh, as presented this evening?
Yes, Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers? Mr. Leary?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Okay, that is a seven oh. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, 5.19, I believe I'm going to ask guidance from Ms. Boatright and Ms. Bowlin. Um, I believe, are we discussing this or what is the action to be had on 5.19?
We're going to remove this request for motion tonight and we'll discuss, the next thing on is the discussion of where we are. So we'll explain it then. How's that?
Perfect. Sounds good. So 5.1, uh, 5.19, request for approval of schematic design is being pulled this evening and that moves us to, uh, discussion items, which leads us into 6.1, which is the School Building Committee update. And I will go back to Mrs. Bowlin for the needed introductions on this.
Yes, so, um, right now, um, we'll start with where we are with Pell. And the Pell School, um, we are at the point now where we were hoping to get this schematic design that we were going to be sending to, um, to ride, finish this week with the price estimates. Uh, we, we are waiting for those to be reconciled with our, um, OPM and we needed another week to get that work done. It's going to be a challenging year because, or, uh, because, uh, of escalating prices right now. And so, uh, we want to make sure we do it and get it right. So we will, um, be presenting the, at the meeting, we're having a special meeting on Monday with the School Building Committee to talk about how those came in and where we are with that project. And so let's stop with that and see, make sure there's no questions. Do you want to add anything to that, Louisa, before we go on to, uh, Rogers?
No, but we can, um, I, I think Kyle is on and Joe with, uh, just a regular update as well, but I think you covered that very well. Thank you.
All right. So I didn't know Kyle and Joe were on. Good.
Yep, so I think they.
Go ahead, Kyle and Joe. You guys take it away now.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Um, I will start with Rogers. Quick update, critical activities, and then I'll go down to Pell and, uh, piggyback off of what Becky just said for everybody. So, for Rogers, we've got our pre-construction and design team meetings that are ongoing. Last Wednesday, we had a meeting with Gilbane and SLAM, Dr. Jermaine, Mr. Young and the co-chairs. Uh, we started aligning the milestones and the schedule for schematic design phase for Rogers. And, uh, I have a few of those dates a little bit further down in my update. So, uh, for our programming verification.
Kyle, you haven't taken over the screen. Do you want to take over the screen so people can see your document?
Yes, that's probably not good.
And I think people will follow it easier if it's on the screen. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a second while I get the permission. All right, can you all see that?
Not yet.
Not yet.
There it is.
Yes, we have it now, Kyle.
All right. So we went over 1A, now we're on 1B, the programming verification. So it, it's noted as ongoing, but it's more or less complete as far as the data collection goes. Uh, two, two weeks ago, we had a meeting with the Athletics Department and that was uh, the last department to meet with for SLAM. So all that data collection is getting processed by SLAM. And that turns into a proposed building, which is laid out with square footages allocated for each program. Uh, this is the support spaces. And that'll continue to be refined as we progress through the design process. 1C, Commissioning Agent, that RFP was out on April 30th. We are getting responses to that on May 20th. And then we'll, we're targeting a recommendation to the School Building Committee, uh, June 7th. And I believe there's a school committee on the 8th, which will follow up with that meeting as well. 1F, our neighborhood meetings, we had one on May 3rd for Rogers. It was well-attended. The neighbors were. The neighbors were provided an update on the project, and they shared their comments and concerns with us. Some of the items that we discussed were the water runoff, privacy and tree screening, the site lighting, rock blasting and rodent displacement. So, all those items, we appreciate being brought to us early so we can come up with a plan to manage and mitigate the concerns of the neighbors through the design and construction process. And we'll have more of those neighborhood meetings in the future. As of right now, no dates are set. Community meetings, we had one the following day, which was May 4th. We provided the similar update to the community, listened to their questions and comments and feedback, and we will be planning more of those meetings in the near future as well. Schematic design phase, first look. So, we coordinated with SLAM, and we're targeting May 24th, which is a building committee date for kind of a first look, maybe some renderings, some drawings, kind of get people's creative juices flowing for the committees and the public. And SLAM will present, you know, where they're at in the process. So, that's what we're targeting as our first look. And then, a follow-up to that, we're targeting June 21st. And of course, we invite everyone from the school committee to attend those school building committee meetings as well. So, those are school building committee dates that you see there. And then, for the schematic design, final package for approval, we're targeting July 19th for the school building committee, and then July 22nd, which would be a special meeting for the school committee, which I'm not sure if that's scheduled yet, but that is our target right now. And then, moving down into Pell, again, pre-construction and OAC meetings are ongoing. We met with teachers last week to provide an update, take some general questions on the project from them, and review the layouts of the new classrooms as far as the visual display boards, millwork, teacher station, things like that. So, we started that conversation, and there will be follow-up meetings to that. Retro commissioning of the existing building. So, we're still in the process of collecting data from the existing building, and we're scheduling them to be onsite hopefully this week, if not early next week. So, that's in the process right now. Neighborhood meetings, we had one scheduled on May 6th, but we postponed that. And we'll be looking to schedule something soon for a follow-up meeting for that. And then, the community meeting, we had in tandem with the Rogers meeting on May 4th. So, again, we gave them the project updates, took their feedback, similar discussion as above. And then, our schematic design package, as Becky had mentioned, we were preparing to present that tonight, but the drawings and estimates we received from Bein came in late Thursday night, so we're still in the process of reconciling that estimate with Bein. And we did need a few more days of time to fully vet out that package. So, that's why we tabled that action item tonight. So, these dates you see were submitted last week are not accurate. So, we do have that special meeting on Monday with the building committee. I'm not sure if we'll need to schedule something with this committee as well for next week, but we haven't discussed that yet with Ms. Boatwright or Mrs. Bowlen. So, we certainly can do that tonight. But just to finish up here, the design development package, we're still targeting the June 7th date for approval to school building committee, and then June 8th for school committee, and construction documents for June 28th, and then July 1st. So, those dates are not changing at this point with this small delay with the schematic design. And another update, which covers both projects, is the website developer. So, we're moving forward with a website developer to design and implement a website for the two construction projects, and that company will be New Wave Industries. And this was recommended and approved with the school building committee last night. So, Ms. Boatwright and Mrs. Bowlen, that concludes our update. If there's discussion, we'll take that.
I think with this school committee, you make your comments about whether we should have a meeting next Thursday to get comments on the schematic design, or would you rather do it the day after or someday next week, just to give you the update? I think it's important to do that for the schematic design that's going into Ride, to get people's feedback and comment. What day of the week would you all like?
This is just a reminder, you'll be meeting with the school, I'm sorry, the city council. Oh, I'm sorry, tomorrow. Thank you.
Yeah. Does anybody have a preference? We've usually been doing it on a Thursday, so that would be the 20th, to give people time to think about it, or do you want to do it on the Tuesday? Does anybody have feedback?
Are you going to, so you got a schematic design and estimate from Bein? I'm just trying to understand. Do you still need to go back to the school building committee and discuss?
So, nothing was presented last night at the school building committee. The schematic design is not ready, was not ready to be presented. So, it will be presented on Monday, the 17th.
Okay.
And then, to follow along with what we had committed, we want to present to you to get comment, and what day next week would work best?
Okay.
Tuesday?
Thursday is fine for me. My life revolves around all these meetings, so.
Thursday would work for me.
Okay. Do we have a workshop on Wednesday? No.
Yeah, something's written down here.
Yes, on Wednesday.
What's on Wednesday?
5:00 PM workshop, is what I have written down.
With the Rogers High School-
Diversity and Relevance.
Diversity, Relevance Committee.
So, we could do it after that, if people wanted to, we could finish one and go right into it, or just do it on Thursday. Might be easier just to do it on Thursday, huh?
Yeah.
So, I will, Thursday, I can't, I won't be around on Thursday. I can't participate on Thursday, so, but that's just one person so far.
I'm okay with Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay, we'll work it out after this, okay? We'll have Kathy work it out, but it'll either be Wednesday or Thursday. Ray will have been part of the school building committee, so he will have had time to comment, and people can join, and we'll have comments from the community as well, so, on the Monday meeting too. But, so we'll work on probably Wednesday or Thursday, okay?
Once again, we want to welcome any school committee members that, you know, want to come in on the Monday meeting and hear what's, you know, what's being discussed. It'll be a repeat probably, you know, Wednesday or Thursday, but we just want you, everybody to know that they're welcome to attend those.
Great. Thank you. I assume that concludes the discussion on the building committee? School building-
I just have a quick question.
Go right ahead.
Is there another neighborhood meeting planned for Pell? I know you said you're going to have one in the future. I think it would help if we could come up with a date. I don't know who's aware of this, but neighbors on Dudley Avenue, my neighbors are having their own meeting on Sunday in Moana Nomi Park to discuss the problems that they're having with the water. They've invited the Newport Daily News. I think it would be helpful if, and I believe Louisa's going to be going to that meeting. It would be helpful, I think, if we could say, you know, we're taking this seriously, and we are having another meeting on such and such a date, so we can address this, you know, maybe it's a meeting that they can come and address a lot of their concerns, which are pretty significant. I mean, they do have a pretty significant water damage down the bottom of the street. So, that's something we can try to set up between now and the end of the week.
So, I just want to clarify, the reason why we delayed it is because if we don't have anything new to add, we don't have anything new to say. And we have heard there's, we've had two meetings with them already, so we're just waiting till we have more information to be able to share with them. So, it's a meaningful meeting. And so, that will come fairly soon after we get the schematic design, but we first need to know that. So, I would, I'm not, I don't know, but it will be certainly within a couple of weeks after we have that schematic design, for sure.
Yeah, the schematic design will have their proposed solution, you know, at least at this stage of their observations and what we are proposing to do onsite. So, we do want to get through the schematic design and be able to have that real substantive conversation about this as well.
A lot of information and feedback from parents.
I do believe we can and will use that tool. We also use that tool as a guidance document to remind us of what people are looking for in the candidate. So, we'll all calibrate ourselves to that document as well, but we will be sharing that out, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Drang, sorry?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
All right, it's a 7-0. Thank you very much.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, I'm back.
Kathy's back.
Cuckoo evening. So, that moves us into 8, section 8 of the agenda, correspondence, monthly correspondence. Is there a motion to accept the correspondence as presented this evening?
So moved.
Motion been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments on the monthly correspondence? Hearing none. Is there, Ms. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to approve, to accept the correspondence as presented?
Yes, Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatwright?
Aye.
Mr. Drang?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you, 7-0.
Okay, and that moves us into reports for the superintendent and staff. And the first report this evening is the expenditure and revenue report and the Newport Public Schools restricted grant report. And I'll turn this over to Mr. Gonzalez for his report and any questions that members may have.
Good evening again, everyone. If I can, just open up the floor to questions with regard to any of the information I shared. Please.
Go right ahead, Mr. Leary.
Mr. Gonzalez, it looks like we're having a $140,000 surplus being anticipated.
That's correct, sir.
That's great, first of all. So, let me follow up with two things there. What do we do with the surplus from last year? I think it was about a million dollars. I forgot the exact number. Sorry about that.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
We had a surplus of about a million dollars last year, am I correct?
We ended fiscal year, I include that every month now, that's on our fund balance. How we ended last year is how we began this year. And it's currently at $595,000 for the beginning balance of 7-1-2020.
So, I'm going to look back-
Would you like me to walk that through for you, sir? We ended the year in the surplus of approximately 134, oh, excuse me, 1,034,000. We ended the year that way. However, we had a negative fund balance to begin the 2020 fiscal year of approximately $97,000. We also had a restatement effect, which the restatement happened in a different fund, not the general fund, but the overall impact was to the general fund of $39,000. And we were carrying a negative balance from a deficit from 2018. That is included on the monthly report, and then it gets down to our beginning fund balance for 7-1-2020. And that number is $595,000, sir.
So, the negative balance from 2018, wasn't that only a payback to the city $100,000 each year?
Well, that's a really good question. And the understanding was, actually, let me restate this, the agreement was that Newport Public Schools would budget $100,000 annually for three years to pay back the deficit. However, they never, they, meaning it was all pre-Ronnie, the accounting team on the city and the accounting team in the school, never booked an entry, an accounting entry for that $300,000. They just allowed it to carry forward in the rears. And once we end the year in with such a large fund balance, it was able to negate that. You basically wipe it off, and here's where we are today, 595.
So, 595, we ended the year 2020 with as a balance?
As a balance, when you take the net effect of the other adjustments I mentioned, the 2018 deficit elimination, and then the restatement and the negative fund balance. Yes, in combination with that, we have now, so we began our 2021 fiscal year with, so I'm just going to say 600K in the bank, and we are in, we are in a good shape right now at this point of the school year as well.
And so, the 140K right now, where was the other 450K used for in this year?
Sir, the 595 fund balance, the beginning fund balance is not considered or taken into consideration on, when I come out with our, where we stand for the current fiscal year, where if we end the year the way, everything holds true to exactly the way this report is, which is unlikely, it's life, right? We have, we still have new bills coming in. But if we end the year with $140,000, that would add to the 600 we already have, not, it's separate in distinct from that number, okay? Right now.
Exactly. Thank you very much. I tried to get to, not only these questions for me, but also have the press and the public there. Mr. Gonzalez, I'm not trying to grill you. but also have the press, the public there, Mr. Gonzalez, not trying to grill you, I'm just trying, sometimes you get, at least I get calls from press saying, what was this thing about? When you didn't explain, you didn't do it. So now they have an idea as well as I do. We'll wrap that. So thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments from Mr. Gonzalez on 9.1 or 9.2? Alrighty, I don't think I'm hearing any, so I would say we will move on to 9.3, the enrollment demographics and homeless reports by the superintendent.
Are there any questions?
Alrighty, thank you. We'll move on to 9.4, the facility update. And I can't see him, but I'm sure Mr. Young has hung around to give us an update. So we'll let Mr. Young give us an update and, and take any questions that we may have.
Sure. So you had the report, no major repairs or anything this month? Just some standardized repairs. The dome roof construction was actually rolled over from last month, but that, that was the, the one big one. Rather than that, we are preparing for summer projects. We have some vendors coming in, giving some estimates and getting some quotes on some things at Thompson and Pell coming up this week, but we're getting ready to do some work over the summer. Questions? Yep.
Question from Mr. Young, this is Ms. Winslow. I was wondering if you could tell me what the criteria is for including an expense on your facilities report? And the reason I ask is.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, it's on the, so it's item 7.2, we get a list of invoices and requisitions. And there were several, there are always a few that kind of seem to me like they could be on the facilities report. And I thought there were several this month. And so I just don't know if it's a timing issue, or certain things are booked to different accounts, or there's a reason that, you know, you might put something on the facilities report versus just sending it, having the team send it as a regular invoice or PO or something.
Yeah, so this criteria, as I go directly through what's, was submitted through Lawson at a end date that's due to Kathy Nash. But I'll check on that, this is the first I'm hearing of that, but I'll check on that and see where the disconnect is for, for next month.
Okay, I mean, I can point out, I can send an email to you and the superintendent if you'd like, just some line items that I saw that might help.
Okay, yeah, I'll take a look at that.
And what, I, I've heard the word before, but what is Lawson?
That's just our, it's our.
Financial reporting system.
Yeah.
May I ask for clarification, Ms. Winslow?
Sure. Well, like, I don't know if you want to see, like there, there was the boiler payment or Con Edison 964 on the invoice requisition report. I mean, we had boiler problems at Rogers and, and so, you know.
It might be the timing, because I, it might have been on last month, because we did report on it. I'll just, I'll double check on that, Ms. Winslow, and I'll, I'll see where the, it might be a timing thing when the actual, they're approved or when they go through. But I'll definitely check on that on 7.2.
Yeah, I think that's probably a lot of what it is. And I know, you know, that the, the stuff that's on the invoice and requisition list might not necessarily be, it's like incurred expenses too.
Right, it may have not gotten through yet. So that, the ones that I have have gone through, they've been paid. So that one may be that they're waiting to get approved and get paid.
Okay.
But I'll double check.
I think that's important, the important point is that I'm capturing requests for requisitions, requests to set up POs, and Mr. Young is reporting on projects completed and how much we've actually spent. So there is a timing difference, there always.
Yeah, about the posting of the payments, when does that occur?
Well, let's see, for instance, with $20,000 dome construction review, that one, once, once approved, it will be paid probably next Monday, and then it'll show up on school committee reports as, as an, as an expenditure when I capture for next month reporting through, you know, say, May 29th or 28th. Typically, I try to get right towards the end of the month as close as possible.
So there's a procedural process, it's almost like a process between the rec, the invoice, the payment, and the posting.
And occasionally, and occasionally, just to throw something out, an emergency will happen before, you know, we'll have the work done and then we'll pay it, only in emergency situations, but that will occur too.
Can I just make a, on the facilities committee, we've been trying to get a really kind of more like an annual report that shows, you know, maintenance issues, and then maintenance, regular maintenance activities, basically, when they're happening. So we can see number two issues and then resolutions. Sometimes they can be the same month, sometimes they can be longer. And then capital items, so that we would be able to see what some of those things are that principals and the, Mr. Young and the superintendent have on their wish list kind of thing, so we can prioritize some of those. But it would start July 1. That's the hope. And we're working with both the superintendent and Mr. Young on creating that. So it will be easier, because right now I have the same questions, like things don't fall in the same month as they happen. And it's very hard for us to track those. So, but it's hard to start in the middle of the year with this. So, and we've had a lot of other things, but July 1, we're going to kick it off.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Young. With that complete, we move into 9.5, distance learning, in-person learning report for the superintendent. Dr. Jermaine, any questions for Dr. Jermaine on 9.5?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead, Mr. Leary.
Mr. Jermaine, I have a question, it kind of ties into it a little bit, I'm not sure exactly how. But you spoke a couple of months ago about if we, on Mondays, which is all distance learning, you need it for testing and things, and all things that get done for students. Now that that's all done, did we go to a five-day week for all students?
It is not completed, Mr. Leary. As a matter of fact, the chair and I had a discussion about this this morning. The makeup testing and the science testing for Thompson will go through the end of May. So we'll wind up having three Mondays, one of them being the day before school gets out. And I will be talking to the principals about whether or not we commit on those Mondays, or we just continue at this point. But we are still in bringing in distance learning students for state testing.
Okay, I did not know that, thank you. Follow up would be, are all administrators back into the schools now too? I get a call from a parent that said, that, you know, he said our kids back to school, are all administrators back? And I said, I didn't know the answer.
Our administrators have been working all along. Are they, you know, building principals are in the buildings, directors, when, whenever, wherever they have to be. We have to remember, directors are not usually situated in one location. They're usually working in buildings with people, but they're in the places they need to be, yes, as far as I know.
So they're not all at home, they're coming in now?
I think, I believe it varies, Mr. Leary, depending upon the day, whether they're involved in online meetings, or whether they're in a professional development. It varies according to the administrator. The most are on a regular basis and, on a regular basis.
Okay, the follow-up to the distance, well, I'm, I'm making action out of the next month for that. I'll put it in that way. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a quick question. I just wanted clarification, I guess, because I looked at the distance learning versus in-person learn, in-person learning numbers. And so there are still kids who are doing full distance learning, even though the hybrid model's gone.
That is correct. They're, they are still, and they are, they wish to continue in distance learning. And as a matter of fact, I am working with the other eight East Bay district superintendents, because we strongly suspect there will be families that still want to continue with distance learning. So we're thinking of possibly having, having further discussions for all East Bay districts, to see if we can put something together, as I shared in my update on Friday night. So we'll continue to research that, and at the same time, try to capture some homeschool families, families that prefer to homeschool their children, but still have a great research-based online curriculum for them with certified teachers. So we're hoping we can maybe put something like that into place.
I have a question.
Yes.
Dr. Jermaine, what sort of feedback are you getting from the teachers and the principals? How is it going with the kids being back in school four days a week?
So far, I'm hearing positive. Elementary is always happy. They love, the more kids, the better. So they're, they're always happy having more children back. The four-day-a-week seems to be moving in a positive direction, and I think the young people like it more too. So I'm, I've only heard positives. I haven't heard anything about children not reporting, or children, you know, absent. So, but I will look into that further. And I believe this is week three of this. So we'll see how it goes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Positive things. The kids are excited to see their friends.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead, Mr. Leary.
Sorry, I should have done it all at once. Is there a possibility of getting Rogers High School on a full day, say, I mean, just necessarily, other schools are doing lunches and spreading them out. Is that a possibility or no?
For this year, we will most likely not be returning. That schedule seems to have worked out well, and in many ways, in, I'll say, just for, I'll say, our transportation and getting children in and out. And with COVID, we're getting students vaccinated 16 plus. But that concrete setting in the cafeteria was not something we really wanted to have with our children. So for this year, we are not, there are not plans to have them staying for lunch here. We still have the grab and go bags.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alrighty, I think that, hearing no other questions, we can move into 9.6, which is the district goals 2020, 2020 to 2021. Any questions for the superintendent on 9.6?
All right.
Not hit, go, go right ahead.
I have them written down, and I don't always pay attention to what number I'm on. I think there was a note about recruiting for NACTAC. I know that it was kind of precarious this year. We didn't know how kids would do with distance learning, you know, if they would want to participate in the CTE programs. And so this, I'm talking about last, you know, summer, we were worried. But there was a note in there about recruiting for the 2021, 2022 year, and I was wondering how that's going. I don't know if Mr. Young is still on or.
He is still on.
I'm still here.
Okay, he's there.
Almost left.
All yours.
So Carrie, Carrie and I are still actively recruiting, still making phone calls. We're looking at doing one more big pitch to Thompson. You know, now that we're, hopefully be able to get outside, we may set up some stations outside, like on the soccer field, where the teachers can set up a little demonstration and stuff for the kids. But, but we're still working on that. I think that the county students will still be a little more difficult. But once things settle, and we all know that we're going to be back in school, Carrie and I both feel like we'll start to get some more county applications. But we're still working right now, we're just really focusing on, on Thompson to make sure all those students are aware of the opportunities.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions on 9.6, district goals? I think not hearing any.
I had my notes, I wanted to show you.
He's muted now. I believe Mr. Young is multitasking this evening.
All right. So 9.7, superintendent's update partnerships, collaborations, and personnel. Any questions for the superintendent on 9.7? All right. Not hearing any. Is there a motion to accept the reports from superintendent and staff as presented this evening?
So moved.
This motion's been made and seconded. And Mrs. Next, we do a roll call vote to accept the report as presented and discussed this evening.
Yes, Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Drang?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you, 7-0?
Okay, that moves into section 10, suggested meeting dates and agenda items. If I recall, there were a couple of school building committee and neighbor meetings on there, some which have passed already. And any discussion or comments on the meeting dates and agenda items?
There's only the one ad that is May 17 now for school building committee. And we're going to have Mrs. Nash reach out tomorrow with a final date for the school committee to follow up.
Correct. Very good. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Leary?
We can just call on Mrs. Nash for agenda items for June, am I correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? If not, there is no executive session, and no material for executive session this evening. So that would move us to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Our motion's been made and seconded, and we will have a simple voice vote. All those in favor to adjourn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, and thanks for your patience this evening and helping me out. And have a good night.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Take care of, yeah, thanks.
Nice job, Mr. Chair. Good job.
Thank you. Take care of, good night.
Bye-bye.